Good evening and welcome to the July 24th City Council Meeting. I will call the meeting to order and we will go right to general orders. And Mr. McNichol, I'll leave it to you.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a request from a council member who had heard, previously heard this presentation from Laura Massina, who is a partner at Elementi Elemental Coffee, co-founder of H&amp;E in Oklahoma City, recovering OKC Public Schools Board Member, and currently serves on the Ralph Ellison Foundation Board, Oklahoma Visual Arts Coalition Board, Midtown Association Board, Oklahoma City Public School Wellness Committee, and Foundation for OKCPS Bilingual Education Committee. You're busy. An interest in city development and citizen voice led to service on the City of OKC Council-OKCPS Joint Task Force, the Bike Ped Master Planning Steering Committee, Abandoned Buildings Coalition, Citizens for a Better Classing, and the Grassroots Maps for Neighborhoods Team. We welcome you and are interested to hear your presentation.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Noble, Council. Thanks for having me this evening. I'm not on a board that's televised currently, so bear with me. As the City Manager mentioned, I did co-found H&amp;E Night Market, and that's what we're here to talk about tonight. It's an event that became kind of a big deal in Oklahoma City. So we're going to start with a little video that shows you what it is. Give you a, if I can do this. It's been a minute. This will give you a feel for what the event looked like and what it meant to our city. So any punk rock fans, that's Tyson Mead of the Chainsaw Kitties. Anyone?
I've been wondering what he looked like.
We can move to the next slide and go on with it. So that gives you a feel for what the event became over time and how big it was and how well-attended and what it looks like over the course of an evening. It's pretty exciting to get there as things are setting up and lots of people arriving early before trucks are even ready to serve. You know, Health Department coming for inspections and all then saying everything, you know, everything is blessed and you can begin and getting things rolling and people coming in as it gets dark outside. But it all started out with just three friends talking about this idea. We had basically two things that we wanted to do. We wanted to build community, to create a place where people could come with their families and with their dogs, and especially where they could come to our part of town because we were on an island in Midtown Oklahoma City. Our coffee shop opened at 8th and Hudson. Ludovine opened a restaurant at 7th and Hudson, and there was really nothing else happening on our street at that time. And so we wanted people to come down to our businesses and, you know, see what we had to offer certainly, and we had plenty of room to invite people out to just enjoy, to have it. We've always had beer, we've always had live music, and it's always been food truck-based. So the idea was like making it, this is my shop when no one's there. But we wanted it to be this, right? We wanted people coming there. We wanted it to be, it was place-making. I'm sure you've heard that phrase a lot in city planning. We wanted it to be a place where people would come and hang out, and the same thing at Ludovine, you know? Fill the street and bring people out there in front of there, and if they're not patrons that night, they know where you are and they'll be back, and they appreciate you're creating that kind of event for the city. We called it H&amp;E because we are at the corner of H&amp;E, Hudson and 8th Street. We thought that would give it a place that people could relate to and they would know how to get there. We did not realize there is an H&amp;H Gun Range when we chose that name. It wasn't really detrimental. So then how we got to that, basically, we just wanted to, we wanted to create, like I said, an event in our part of town, and we decided to do sort of the Austin food truck thing. At that time, there weren't a lot of food trucks operating in Oklahoma City. Big Truck Tacos had just opened, and they came from Austin and had had the first, you know, modern-day food truck in our city. And so we had the idea that if we could get the handful of trucks that we did have in the city to come to the parking lot, that we would create a little event there behind our shop and kind of get that Austin vibe going. That's what we were starting with. What you need to make that happen, of course, is a lot of people who will come and do the things that they do, because lots of people are doing really interesting things in a city, and you want to bring them to do those interesting things all in the same place so that people can come and enjoy it. So one of our early partners was Better Block OKC. And Better Block was a program that started in Oak Cliff, near Dallas. It was a young artist there who wanted to bring people to his block, and so they decked out an entire block temporarily with paint on the streets, with streetscaping, with benches and plants and sidewalk cafes, and they made this entire block that had been mostly vacant a block that you would want to come and visit. And so we partnered with our local Better Block OKC, and they did this on the street in front of Ludovine. They brought in benches that they made really inexpensively out of old, what are those called? Pallets for bike parking. They painted the streets. They did reverse angle parking on that side of the street just to test it out and did, you know, kind of a lot of things that we just wanted to try, give people a chance to check it out. This is another event that tagged on to our event. Allison Bartabaly is really involved in Oklahoma City, and she's done a lot of cool things, and she was involved in Better Block, but this was her project also. It's an open-air flea market that started out just happening once a month at the same time as H&amp;E. So that's on the corner of H and 10th, and, you know, brings more people, more people come to their event, more people come to our event when we're doing them at the same time. Those are images from her market. Also nonprofits or other community members who are doing interesting things. Swab Squad is a group that started when the founder had cancer and needed a bone marrow transplant, and so he started this to find matches. And so it's just, you know, you get people to come in, you swab them, you bank it so that you know who they match with, and eventually it could help someone, and his life was saved because he found a donor. And there have been matches made at H&amp;E, which is a super cool story to share and a good reason to have an event. Another really cool partner we had was called Short Order Poems. They had this idea of going out into the community and, you know, bringing poetry out to the people. They started with H&amp;E Night Market. They called it Short Order because you could, in effect, come and order the kind of poem that you wanted to read. So you come in, you take the menu, you select what style you want, you know, if you have any themes that you want included. They write you a poem, you pay them five bucks, they write you a poem, you come back in 15 minutes and pick it up. Writing on actual typewriters out there, and they give you these beautiful things. And it's all over. Nature Conservancy is our neighbor now. They weren't when we started, but they moved in on 7th Street, and they did monthly art showings when we had H&amp;E. The Energy is a longtime partner as well, and this is one image, but they did a lot. They had, we gave them an entire vacant lot that they used and set up, you know, blow up things. They have a really cool billiards game that's on the ground with your feet, you know, playing soccer balls, but Energy was a great, great partner. Basically, any community members who are looking to, you know, to show what they're doing, let them come show it where you're doing it. We also included buskers, people who just wanted to come out. We didn't charge them to be there. We let them work for tips and just, you know, add some animation and some interest to the event. Bicycle Valet, one of the funnest things I think we did, encouraging people because the parking gets tricky, and we didn't want to manage parking, and we never did manage parking. And so we said, you know, park wherever you can, it's a city. Park where you can legally and put your bike on your car and ride it over, and we'll keep your bike for you during the event. So we had our local cycling team volunteer to valet those bikes and keep them safe in the back of my shop while people were at the event, and then they'd come get them at the end of the night and head back out. That was pretty fun. Our partnership with DNA Racing turned into them hosting their Pro-Am Classic at H&amp;E. That happens once a year. We'll get to that as we get to the evolution of the event, but pro-cycling race that happens also at the same time as the event to bring people to both. Another key piece is having sponsors who really care and get it. Jonathan Fowler was a huge part of the success of H&amp;E. He, I don't know, yeah, I don't know that we would be what we became if he hadn't been there. He was one of the founders of Norman Music Fest, which has also become huge. He has an art gallery in his new Volkswagen dealership in Norman. He's just, he's been, he's involved in Tulsa in the stuff that happens on Guthrie and the Greens. He's involved in Norman, very involved in all the different districts of Oklahoma City and several in Tulsa. And what he's done, and if you can convince any of your local people with money to do something similar, he's put their, a big chunk of their marketing dollars into community events. So instead of spending them on radio and TV ads, he's spending them where people go and people know that Fowler is supportive of all those things, and I can guarantee it makes a big impact on their bottom line. So that's marketing money well-spent in his case. And just his expertise also brought us, his PR person, Tracy Zeke with Bumper Shoot, and when we started working with them is when we really got our messaging right and started drawing people in. And then we have partners like Cooper House who did our website for us for free. They were an in-kind donor, you know, sponsor. And again, DNA Racing, Midtown, the district also put a little bit of money in. So now, hang on a sec. I'm going to step back out and see if... Okay. We're still on the same one. So then, of course, the developers, the people who own the properties where you're trying to get things going, make a big difference. And if they understand the impact on their development of their properties, they will encourage you and help you to use their properties to make your events happen. They want, our music stage has always been in a vacant lot that the property owners have let us use. They also have allowed temporary use of buildings that are vacant. This was Ed Shaddid's headquarters when he ran for mayor a couple of years ago, right there at the corner of 7th and Hudson, so right in the heart of it, a great place for him to meet people who are coming downtown. Smart on his part, but also smart of the developers to go ahead and rent that just for a few months, knowing that it wasn't going to be a long-term rental. And then you have to have, of course, you have to be ready to pivot and just be flexible and not... We never decided what H&amp;E would become. We let it become what it wanted to become and helped, you know, helped it along, supported it. But when the first one, the first event happened in the parking lot, like I was talking about, we got shut down. I didn't have proper permitting. I thought I was going to have proper permitting and found out at the last minute that I wasn't zoned correctly to have it in the parking lot, and later found out it would have been easier actually to get our vocable and have it on the street in front of my shop, and that's what we eventually did. But I couldn't legally do that in the parking lot as I thought I could. So we did get shut down, not by the city. The Health Department came out and the Able Commission came out, and the city actually said, "We're not going to shut your event down," but every truck got shut down and the alcohol sales got shut down, so, you know, call that what you want. The nice thing is that the, after that, I got a quick call from my counselor, Meg Salier, who said, "Let, you know, come down, let's talk about this." And she brought everyone into the room who works on events, and very naive, I mean, I was just very naive. I didn't understand the process. I was just trying to have a party in my parking lot. I didn't ima, I was even trying to do it legally. I didn't imagine that it was more difficult than just inviting people. So Councilor Salier had, you know, the Chief of Police and the barricade people and the sanitation people and the Health Department and the Able Commission and all the players who get involved when a big event happens come and meet together and figure out how we could make this happen, you know, how we could smooth it all over and make it happen because it looked really bad for them. So we got it up and running in October of 2011. We had our second event, and we did shut down just half the street. We only had just one lane of traffic and just half a block. That's all the trucks that we had. It was about 1,000 people who came out for that first one. The very first one, maybe 700 people had showed up. I mean, it was starting, people were starting to pour in. The second one, when it was going again, people came out, about 1,000 of them. Then from 2012 to 15, we had an event every month from March to October on the last Friday of the month, and then in 2016, we switched to just an annual event. So that's our very first one. It was looking like fun, wasn't it? I'm sure it would have been a great evening. And then about flexibility, of course, you have to be ready to call it when the weather doesn't cooperate and to take the people who get mad at you because of that and people who don't want you to park on their parking lots. But yeah, I mean, then it becomes what it becomes, right? An event like this, of course, has an impact in the place in your town where you do it, and the impact in our, on our street is very flagrant. Businesses who moved into that area came to see us and said, "We're coming here because of H&amp;E. We want to be here, we want to be in this community, we want to be in this neighborhood, and we want people to know where we are." Nature Conservancy, one of the first ones to move down to 7th and Hudson and then became a big part of our event. Also, businesses that start out as food trucks and then become brick-and-mortars, and this is also in Hudson, is just a block up from me. This building was vacant. They bought it, completely renovated it, and now they have, you know, now they have a brick-and-mortar store. This Swanson Tire Company is at 9th and Hudson. I used to go there with my car. Now I go there to eat Mexican food. Developers came in and redid it. It's a beautiful redevelopment with this Mexican restaurant that's a part of the Good Egg Dining Group, which is a big dining group in Oklahoma City. Citizens Bank of Edmund is bringing a branch to Midtown. It's all largely related. They were a supporter of H&amp;E. We, in turn, taught them how to do the event. They have one in Edmund now, and now they're coming to Midtown to, with the guarantee that we're going to be their customers, and just to get a feel for that, get their hands on that vibe and, you know, get plugged into what's going on down there. Another truck who has now become a restaurant, and this is in that same Barrios Development, Halls Pizza Kitchen, which is beautiful, and there's a yoga studio there too in that development. So this is called The Blue Garden. It's up at Harvey and 10th, and also we take credit for it. It became possible because of H&amp;E. These people decided to build a more solid, a semi-permanent installation of trucks, and it's just kind of an open-air bar with food trucks, similar to what you would see in Austin, but it's also an example of good development. The property owner doesn't intend for it to be a food truck park forever. It intends it to be that until the property becomes more valuable as something else. I have a new ramen shop just catty-corner from me. That's fantastic. You can see in the back of that photo, there are still vacant properties on our street despite all of the ones that have filled in. There's still room, and even new development going in. This is at 6th and Hudson, new apartment building, is real urban-style living right there. So it impacts your neighborhood, but then there's, there can be a broader impact, and there certainly was in Oklahoma City. We had updates to the city code that resulted from the catastrophe, if you want to call it that, and then just from the ongoing event with food trucks being a different category than they had really dealt with before, and then spin-off events and other things. So in Oklahoma City, the only food trucks they had really considered for the purposes of code were ice cream trucks. And so in effect, their code was that you could park your vehicle as long as people were standing in line, you could stay. But if there were no people, you couldn't stay and wait for people to come. And that was, you know, for ice cream trucks. And it wasn't, it didn't fit anymore. And so with the rise in food trucks happening in Oklahoma City, they had to update that code and readjust. They also got really good at helping citizens plan events that are safe and legal. So they have a special events guide online that has all the step-by-step. If you're having this kind of event, you need this and this and this. Walk you through it, and they have a point person in the city who helps you through that process as well, as well as monthly meetings, the city services meetings, where you go and present what your event's going to be, and hopefully you've already worked with all the different people in the room, but everyone can kind of sign off and agree together that everything's in place and that you're ready to go before it goes to council. This is the event that I mentioned that is happening in Edmund now called Heard on Heard, sponsored by Citizens Bank. Same event, really, different location. This event is a spin-off also. It was, it's called Eats on 8th. It happens at Harvey and 8th Street, a disgruntled truck owner who started an event the same night as ours, a block away. He's still going monthly. We've moved on. Eats on 8th. And that is really what I have for you guys, except I'll answer your questions, of course. Cover anything that you think I missed.
Laura, I was the city councilor who was at the meeting that you presented with John McLennie and Patty Evans and another city person. I was so impressed. First of all, I just love your presentation. Did you do the...
Thank you, I did. It's prezi.
Yes.
I learned how to use it for that purpose, yeah.
Yeah, very nicely done.
Thank you.
And there are a number of things that I thought were really valuable for us to hear as we move forward, trying to think about our downtown and think about specifically our development of Block 34. First of all, I love that you are a citizen who just did this. Yep. You know, we recently had some press about expanding the palate of people who do things in the city, and so you're a great example of what an individual can do, who's passionate, flexible...
And who knows a lot of people who also want to do the things.
Who knows a lot of people, who's creative and just recognizes that something isn't there that you would like and doesn't wait for somebody else to do it.
Yeah.
I was also interested in, when I first heard your presentation, the difficulty working with the city, not specifically the city, but getting things organized and how you were able to work then. And now the city does have the special events on their website and the monthly meetings. I don't know if Stillwater actually needs monthly meetings right now, but it would be nice to have something. I think, I think just having it out there for everyone is accessible and avoids a lot of hurt feelings and misunderstandings and angry patrons. I know you started in 2011. I'm wondering, was everything in the evening?
Yes.
You worked March through October, so you're through the hot summer.
It has always been an evening event, yes.
Okay.
Starting at 6:00 in the evening, ending at 11:00 when the noise permit ends, basically. We unplug the music and start closing it up.
Okay. So didn't have to worry about shade necessarily.
Right. Sometimes it was hot starting out, but it would cool off as we went.
Not this week.
You guys have nice shady parking spots, though.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Well, speaking of parking, that was another thing that I was really fascinated by, that you had not made any accommodation for parking.
Yeah. We decided that, and not always to the, I mean, you saw the sign. Not all of our neighbors perhaps appreciated that. Yeah, we didn't feel like it was our responsibility. It's a difficult thing to manage, and we had a lot of other things that we cared more about.
And at its height, how many people did you have at this event?
At its height, it was 40,000 people coming down. We were up to 50 food trucks. It was spanning six city blocks.
It's a lot of cars.
It's a lot, it's a lot of cars, it's a lot of people. I have no idea where they parked.
Did you have anyone, maybe civic groups or churches or something that maybe parked people? Did you see it, where they would charge for parking and let you park there?
I didn't, I didn't see that. St. Anthony's Hospital's very close to us, and they actually opened a parking lot and let people use it without charging them. I don't know if people did charge. In, we're Midtown, so in Bricktown, people pay for parking all the time. It hasn't moved to Midtown yet, and I don't know, I don't know if people gave that a try or not. I mean, it's coming. We're a city, and we're turning into a more vibrant and more developed city, and people are going to have to figure out how to deal with it. Yeah.
Let's see. It's, then, how come you decided to stop?
Okay. Thank you for asking that because I should have said that already. We decided to move it to once a year because we felt like we had really accomplished what we set out to accomplish in our neighborhood. People knew where we were, the businesses were developing, and so it was kind of, it was done, and then we had handed the torch to Heard on Heard in Edmund, and a lot of other people just started doing similar events, and really, any event you go to now has music and food trucks. So we were like, "Okay, we've done this. Oklahoma City doesn't need this anymore. We certainly don't need to do it every month. Let's do it once a year." We decided we wanted to keep that energy because it is a force. We wanted to use it instead to promote cycling in Oklahoma City and cycling as a sport, and so we partner with the Pro-Am. They bring their professional Pro-Am Classic races. They had, they have three nights of racing, or three days of racing in Oklahoma City. The first night is Midtown. At H&amp;E Night Market is the first weekend in June. Pro cyclists, you know, racing these really fast courses, it's very exciting, and it gives people in Oklahoma City who would have come to H&amp;E the chance to see that level of cycling, which they may never have seen before and probably not in person, for sure. And then it also makes the event really fun for the cyclists who are coming in, and we've, our family also hosts a team that comes in from Austin, and they love that race in part because of that Friday night ambiance with the music and the food trucks and the people and the lights, and it makes it just a really exciting race for them. So benefits both events, and, you know, we didn't have to retire it, we just got to plug it in somewhere else.
Did you use, I know you had a PR firm who did it, it sounds like, for free?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Was it mostly promoted through social media?
Yes, absolutely. No paid marketing at all, no printed materials, all social, all, you know, answering the phone call from the newspaper, going on News OK, making the rounds of the radio stations and the TV stations, but nothing that we paid for.
No big, did you have billboards or anything like that?
No.
So...
All social, yeah.
All right. Did they give you maybe an estimate of what it would have cost had they helped you?
Yeah, I've never asked that question, but I'm still, I'm actually working with that PR firm for something else. I will, I will ask her. I'm pretty sure it's a big price tag.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, they're sending out our press releases and making those connections for us that we couldn't have made, you know.
Just having a social media manager who really knows what he...
And we still have, the same person who does our social media for the coffee shop, ran the media for H&amp;E, and also, he started out as a volunteer, became the event manager. We were able to give him a little stipend every month to help him, you know, to help him and to help us get that event together. So he was like the day of contact for that event. and they, they love that race, in part because of that, that Friday night ambiance with the music and the food trucks and the people and the lights, and it makes it just a really exciting race for them. So benefits both events, and, you know, we didn't have to retire it. We just got to plug it in somewhere else.
Did you use, I know you had a PR firm.
Mm-hmm.
Who did it, it sounds like, for free?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Was it mostly promoted through social media?
Yes, absolutely. No, no paid marketing at all. No printed materials, all social, all, you know, answering the phone call from the newspaper, going on News OK, making the rounds of the radio stations and the TV stations, but nothing that we paid for.
No big, did you have billboards or anything like that?
No.
So?
All social, yeah.
All right. Did they give you, uh, maybe an estimate of what it would have cost had they helped you?
I, yeah, I've never asked that question, but, um, I'm still, I'm actually working with that PR firm for something else. I will, I will ask her. I'm pretty sure it's a big price tag.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, they're sending out our press releases and making those connections for us that we couldn't have made, um, you know.
Just having a social media manager who really knows what he or she's doing.
And we still have, the same person who, um, does our social media for the coffee shop, ran the media for H&amp;E's, and became, also, he started out as a volunteer, became the event manager. We were able to give him a little stipend every month to help him, you know, to help him and to help us get that event together. So he was like the day of contact for that event. So he managed it when it was a monthly thing, and he continues to do the social media for my shop. But, yeah, someone who is on the inside and knows the event, knows the people, and is connected in the city is really helpful on that. Yeah.
On the social media, did they use sponsors, logos, and things like that? Because you said you had a lot of really good people who wanted to pitch in, so did you?
Yeah, we definitely shouted out to our, definitely shouted out to our, um, our sponsors, and they all appeared on the website as well.
Was there, uh, anything at the event where it had sponsors?
Yep, lots of them liked the, the banner acknowledgement, and we, we definitely did that. Yeah.
Very cool.
It was fun. It was a fun ride. I learned a lot.
I, I love the story, and I, um, uh, made it down a couple of times.
Oh, good.
Just to hang out. But, um, it, what I liked about the story is that this wasn't a municipal event, right? I mean, the city wasn't, uh, putting this on for you all. I mean, what, what was the extent of, of the city of Oklahoma City's involvement once, once you sort of got through the permitting process?
The extent, that was the extent of their involvement, was helping it, helping us to make it easy to get permitted and to figure out those logistics.
What was, what's Heard on Heard like? Is that a, also privately-run event, or is that something the city?
It is, it is. Um, it's Citizens Bank of Edmond that puts it on, and they, they run it privately.
So for, I mean, for my purpose as a councilman here, what, um, what's your advice to a municipal government that wants to make sure these things are possible or would like to see these things encouraged in, in our community? Um, what would you say?
Yeah, make it, make it really easy for the community members to do it. Make the permitting process easy to understand. Not too many things to, you know, not too many hoops to jump through. A person who they can sit down with and walk through and figure out what they need to get done, when, a timeline. Um, yeah, just make it as easy as you can. Encourage, encourage your developers to let them use buildings and lots, and if you have properties that are available, make, you know, let people use them.
That sounds very easy.
Yeah, it is. It's really.
I, I would love to hear more about that kind of, I mean, if you're down there and, you know, you're a new shop, and there's a couple of, you know, a new restaurant, and a lot of stuff that's not really being used, I assume, around you at the time, um, what was that like trying to build some consensus of, of people who were going, I, what are you talking about? This isn't, you know, I mean, they don't know really what's going to happen. How do you make that happen? That's a difficult.
I don't know how you make that happen. It just happens.
Just conversations and describing your?
I mean, we didn't, we didn't really meet any resistance. We had that first event that got shut down, then the city helped us have the second event, but people wanted to come. And the people who owned the buildings see that the people want to come, and they know that that benefits them. And so our, the, our landlords were just very helpful. They let us store things in their vacant buildings. They opened them up for temporary use. We had a park in one of the buildings one time, just so like a, a, put down green, you know, fake grass and kid toys and made an indoor park, just a pop-up park. Um, yeah.
That's great.
It's just, just fun stuff, yeah.
That's great.
Did the property value increase?
Most definitely. Our rent went up a little bit.
No good deed.
Right.
I'm curious, how many bikes did you park? Do you have any idea?
We never parked as many as we wanted to. People didn't use it as much as we wanted them to. So I would say maybe 30 bikes, pretty, pretty regular. Just 30 bikes. Yeah, most people did not cycle in.
Okay.
Yeah, even though we kept tolling them to. Yeah, that's one thing that didn't ever really happen the way we thought it might.
Did you have any regulations on the generators for the food trucks?
We did not. Um, we would, uh, if you were doing a food truck event, I would definitely encourage that. And if the, if the city can make it easy for, you know, if you're planning to build anything out that would be for food trucks, if you can make it easy for them to plug in and not have to use a generator, I would highly recommend it. The generator noise and fumes are just not pleasant. And we asked them to, you know, to, uh, block the noise so that it wouldn't come into the event, uh, but we, we did not do a good job of regulating that, and it was not always pleasant. Most people don't care, apparently. It always bothered me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, she asked about marketing costs, but just in terms of permit costs and, and other hard costs that you have, would, I would assume we had to, uh, to, to pay on an event like this. What, what do you?
Our, um, our total budget, like even for an entire year, because we can, we can do the revocable, revocable permit for an entire year, and some of the, some of the permitting things are yearly. Some of the things are event by event, like, uh, which are not city-related, porta potties, security, uh, barricades, et cetera. Our entire event budget for a whole year was $50,000, which is not huge. It's not huge. But it's because we got so many people out helping us and so many in-kind donors, you know, doing things for us. We had a company who came out, um, and brought tables out, uh, because they rent tables, and they're beautiful tables, and, you know, that, that kind of thing. So we really kept our expenses down. It doesn't have to be terribly expensive. The permitting process is not, not expensive. Insurance, of course, is another.
How many porta potties do you recall?
I think at the, at the height of it, we must have had, we must have had four banks of, maybe four each. Yeah.
What's the one thing you would do different if you started this up again?
I don't know that I would do anything different. It was a lot of fun. It wasn't perfect, but it was fun.
I was going to ask the same question in a little different way. What was your advice to Heard on Heard that was different than what you did?
Okay, we just, um, you know, gave them the, the layout for, yeah, that's a great question, but gave them the layout for how to, how we manage the food trucks, like when, when we contact them, which food trucks we like to work with, what, what are the pieces, you know, what are the nuts and bolts of the event, the, the trucks and the music and the, and the contacts, give them, shared our contacts with them, and just kind of gave them a timeline. Here's how we lay it out, and here's what happens when during the month leading up to it, just to make it easy. We did learn a lot about, uh, planning an event, for sure.
It's why it's a whole job and, you know, really.
Yeah, that's why once a year is really funny.
Yes. Uh, did you have someone who just worked with food trucks? Because I know that's a job within itself to contact and make sure they're going to be there, or was that part of the social media thing?
So the person who I mentioned who did, who did our social media outreach, Brian Bergman, who became our event manager, um, he was the one who sent the messaging to them, asked them to get their stuff in, you know, monthly, and then, um, was there on the day of to get them parked. Yeah, logistically, you have to have someone there. But they, over time, it evolved into a system where the trucks knew ahead of time where they were going to be parked, and the earlier they got registered, the, the better spot they got. They got to pick their, their spot, in effect. So, um, over time, that all got smoothed out as well. We got big so fast, you know, it took, it took us a couple months to get it, get our feet back under us. But honestly, Brian did a lot of that work, and I don't, I know the details of it. Is he interested in moving to Stillwater? No, he isn't. He's not available.
May I ask a question that's off this, that is related to your, uh, VITA list of all the other things that you do?
Yeah, of course.
Tell me about the abandoned building committee that you're on.
Okay, that, that was a coalition. I think the, it was kind of looking at what might be done to encourage, uh, property owners to go ahead and pay their taxes or, and/or keep up their properties, uh, because the city spends a lot of time chasing people around, trying to get them to do those things, and, you know, go and write them a violation, and then come back and see if they did or didn't do it, and then try to find them for not doing it, and then, you know, all the legal things that come along with holding things up. So they were trying to streamline that process and just looking at what are the, what are the different possible ways, um, to deal with that issue and how other cities have dealt with it. Honestly, I don't know what the, what the outcome was of that. I think that there was, uh, well, never mind. Uh, I'm not sure what decisions were made, um, based on that exploration by the committee.
Okay.
It was interesting.
Yeah, I bet.
There's a lot of tax dollars that the schools weren't getting, for example, you know.
A lot of tax dollars. Schools aren't getting, uh, cities aren't getting sales tax, just a lot of.
Yeah, and a lot of cities have interesting ways of dealing with it.
Doesn't make the city look good.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
That's great.
We so appreciate that you took the time to come here.
Yeah, it was a pleasure.
Fascinating story and journey, and.
Yeah, it's a fun story.
Good for you.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope everybody that's watching on TV is taking notes also and, uh, talking to their friends.
Okay, that brings us to Item B, bid recommendation. Mr. McNichol.
Gary Johnson will have that report tonight. Mayor?
Gary Johnson, Stillwater Regional Airport. That's an exciting act to follow, I tell you. Lots of energy and, and entrepreneurship going on there. Uh, tonight, we bring to you, um, a request for bid award for, uh, for crack seal and crack repair on runway 422. A grant has been approved by the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission on May 17th for up to $115,000 total project with our share at 57.50. The bids did come in considerably less than that, and tonight, we're asking approval of the low bidder on this project. Would, do you have any questions?
Nope.
I did not.
No.
We, uh, Stillwater Regional Airport Authority and staff recommend approval.
All right, discussion councillor. Or is there a motion?
Motion to approve the recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation. Please vote. And with a vote of three to zero, that bid recommendation is approved. That takes us to ordinances. Mr. Dorman?
Ordinance number 3378. Uh, I guess I need to give you some background information on this one. Uh, this ordinance is something that I'm recommending that we do rather quickly. Uh, the bid, the downtown bid is going to expire on August 22nd, and with it, uh, the old ordinance, uh, which ties a lot of the events downtown to the alcohol, serving of alcohol at events downtown to the existence of the bid. And since there will probably be a period of time where there won't be a bid in place, uh, we need to make some adjustments to this ordinance in order to, uh, to cover that lapse period. The other thing that's happening is, you'll recall last fall, the voters went to the polls and voted to make some major changes to the alcohol laws, the, the big change being that there will no longer be 3-2 beer beginning in October of, uh, 2018. And so we have an entire section here that's tied to that. So given those two things, uh, we're recommending some changes. I will also tell you that this will not be the last time you will see alcohol in front of you, uh, in the next six months or so, because as we move closer to October of 2018, it will be necessary to basically do an entire rewrite of the city's alcohol code, and we're gearing up for that right now. Uh, we, we're talking to people at ABLE, and, uh, it's going to be quite an undertaking, but I think in the end, we're going to end up with a much slimmed-down code, uh, which will make things a lot simpler. Um, the two sections, 3-15 and 3-92, uh, address different issues. 3-15 is the section that deals with, uh, drinking alcoholic beverages in public, and alcoholic beverages being those things that are regulated by the state of Oklahoma primarily through the ABLE Commission. And what I'm proposing here is to basically codify the existing practice that we have right now with a few exceptions, and I'll, I'll point those out as we get to them. But basically, uh, it's, it would be illegal to, the, the, the basic premise we start with is that, that it's illegal to consume alcoholic beverages in public, and there are some exceptions. Uh, the first one being Stillwater Regional Airport, if, if there ever was a bar or something established out there. Obviously, we'd want the airport board to have authority over that. Uh, there is no established facility out there right now, but this authorization's been on the books for a while, so no reason to remove it. Uh, the community center and Lakeside Golf Course, uh, both have traditionally been permitted for this purpose. Uh, OSU campus, they are their own regulatory regime over there. The regents have rules with respect to alcohol use, and so we thought it was best to go ahead and codify that. Uh, and number four is the existing practice with the downtown bid to the extent that you can serve at downtown, uh, outside tables and so forth that are licensed areas by ABLE. Uh, and we have several of those. The one difference here is that it would actually, I, I didn't limit it to a specific area, so it could conceivably happen on Washington Street or, uh, Hester or someplace like that, somewhere else in the city. So, uh, this, that would be one change. Uh, and then the last one, within the boundaries of an area permitted by the ABLE Commission, uh, where only wine or beer is served, and that would take care of the downtown event. So if you wanted to have a wine tasting downtown on the street, if someone wanted to sponsor an event like that, uh, they would permit the area through ABLE, and whatever area ABLE says is the bar, that's what it would be. Um, and then, um, and it's not just limited to downtown. This could also happen elsewhere in the city if it's permitted by ABLE, and that being the key thing here, that ABLE would decide the boundaries of the, of the area that, where it could be consumed, and then it's basically roped off and, and, and you serve alcohol at that location. So that's 315. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Thank you for working one year ahead so we can do this, and I, I'm pretty sure that there are people out there cheering about all that you've just said.
There's a lot going on. Uh, 392 is the 3-2 beer. Yes, sir.
Sorry, just a couple of quick questions on that. So you said, well, in the last part, the roped-off area by ABLE, there's nothing we can do about that anyway, right? I mean, that's ABLE's.
Uh, but if, if, if you had an event, and there were two things, there's two parts to this. One is, is an area, it would be like a beer garden or something along those lines, or an event where wine or beer is served, and that would be a wine tasting or something, and ABLE decides to, to permit that area. What, the area that ABLE permits, that's the area that, where alcohol could be served. And that can be a block or two in some instances. ABLE would have control over that. The city wouldn't be necessarily making that, uh, that decision, except to the extent that you allow the street closing, which would be, is at the discretion of the city manager.
So our code will say you can do that in an area that ABLE permits, but we're not restricting where?
Actually, there'll be coordination between the manager's office and ABLE. What would actually happen is that they will contact the manager's office and say, and ask, uh, for an event in particular, uh, are you going to do a street closing in this area, and is this an area that we can do alcohol, and you'll, you'll decide what the boundaries of that will be, and then it'll, it'll be established.
So if somebody wanted to do that in somewhere outside of downtown or?
Yes, that could happen.
Out on Perkins Road, at those shops or something out there, if there was a, a wine shop to go in, they could do something out there, too?
Yes. It's not limited, it's not limited to downtown.
Okay. Um, and then you said there was a change on the, I think the fourth one, or the second to last one you were talking about, where permitted tables on the sidewalk?
Yes.
Currently, that's only allowed?
That's only downtown, but under the new language, that could go anywhere.
Okay.
So we're, we would be expanding that. And again, it's, it's all subject to licensure by ABLE, so.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Um, the 3-2 component, section 3-92, uh, again, we've, we've left in the, most of what is in place now. Items four and five are the new parts. Uh, the OSU addition, we basically just delegate to OSU top, any consumption on their campuses based upon their rules, and so we, we leave that to them. Uh, number five is where the departure is, and I might impose on Paula to show you a map of, uh, my lovely legal description that I put in here, which is obviously subject to change. Uh, the way that the ordinance reads now is that it's within the confines of an area inside the bid that is at a bid-sponsored event. So if the bid sponsors, well, Trucks and Toons, if you want to have alcohol there, you establish a bar, a bar area by putting up barricades, and that's where it is. Uh, with the expiration of the bid, that no longer would be available. So I sat down with, with Norman and some of the staff, and we looked at the area where most of this activity is going on. And so if you see the areas on the map here in green, uh, that's the primary area where you would not have restrictions on, uh, public consumption of 3-2 beer. And it's not necessarily limited to events, but I will tell you, there are no package sellers within those boundaries. Uh, so any, basically, you would still have scenarios where someone couldn't just walk out of a, of a bar with a beer in their hand and drink it, because the ABLE rules say you can't carry it out the door. Uh, but, uh, it, this would allow for events, you know, if you wanted to do a street closure and, and serve beer within the, the street closure area, you would be able to do that. Uh, and that's limited to downtown, and this is the ordinance that will basically get repealed when the state law changes, uh, in, uh, October of, of 2018. So this is kind of a temporary measure right now.
Is Block 34 included in that?
Yes, ma'am. That's the large part on the west side.
Okay.
It's all green.
All green. In fact, it's green all the way to the community center.
So does, I was at Food Trucks and Toons on Friday, and they have, um, a little beer corral roped off with cattle. roped off with cattle guards, it looks like. Is that still how it will work in this area, or at an event like Food Trucks and Tunes, if you're serving 3-2 beer, is it, you can sort of walk around the whole block with it?
It's, there's no limitation on the area with this change. It's not, it's not limited to a specific area. So, as long as it's within the boundaries of the area where the public consumption is permitted.
And as long as it's non-intoxicating?
It's 3-2, yes.
That's my favorite phrase in all of Oklahoma law.
Yeah, they don't call it.
Non-intoxicating alcoholic beverage.
Oh, later.
They quit calling it non-intoxicating a while ago, I think, because it was such a joke, but.
If I may, John, just, there still will have to be a designated sale area that is roped off if, and it goes back to some really antiquated Oklahoma laws regarding main purpose. If it is just the sale of beverage until 2018, as I understand it, there will still have to be a designated area for sale if there are people under the age of 18 in the area. Doesn't mean you can't carry it off.
So, you can still carry it.
Right, if they have an on-off license.
Okay. So, there's still some complications.
There's some complications that are not.
We're making it a little bit easier for people to have events and.
Right.
To sell beer at events.
This is, that's the part of the idea behind this, is that we would try to eliminate the necessity of the, you know, the barriers with people standing there, watching folks coming and going. That would go away. The barriers would only be up in the scenario of closing a street.
Yeah.
As opposed to being the, the barrier for the consumption of alcohol. But, again, this one is, this is a temporary measure. This is, for lack of a better term, a Band-Aid until we get to 2018, and then, when 3-2 beer goes away in Oklahoma, then the other provision, which we will probably have some refinements for you before then, will be the, the provision that basically we'll go forward with.
Progress. Okay, do we vote on this?
Yes, ma'am. I would, this would be a first reading tonight, and then we would second read it, I believe, at the meeting on the 7th. And I, I believe that we have the events covered through September and August, if I'm not mistaken. I'm not asking for an emergency clause on this. If we second read this the 7th and publish the next day, we wouldn't need an emergency clause, and that would get us just past Labor Day before this goes into effect.
As I recall, there's nothing after the third Thursday of August.
But the bid is still in effect when the next food truck thing goes, so we're still okay.
Yeah, it'd be August 22nd, uh-huh. Yes.
This will get us into early September.
Yes.
Okay, councilors, if there's no more discussion, is there a motion?
Motion to move this to the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to advance ordinance number 3378 to second reading. Please vote. And with a vote of three to zero, 3378 advances to second reading.
Thank you.
That takes us to reports from officers and board. City attorney?
Nothing to report tonight, ma'am.
City manager?
No items, mayor, thank you.
Counsel?
No, thank you.
No, ma'am.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please vote. And with a vote of three to zero, city council is adjourned.
Thank you.